All the meeting to order, City of University Heights City Council meeting December 12th, 2023. And we're in the at the community center. Roll call, all five councilor present. Yes, that's true. And uh. First order of business is approval of minutes on November 14. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Did any everyone have a chance to review them? Hearing. Hearing no objection, the minutes will be approved by unanimous consent. Public input. We have. One member of the public here, Kat, would you like to speak? Okay, thank you. Uh, Mike, did you hear from the public at all?
Did not hear from anyone else.
So mayor's report, I have two openings starting in January. For a board of adjustment and tree board, if anybody would like to uh. Uh, serve on any city committee, please contact me. Uh, we'll go on to city attorney report from Hawaii. And Steve, he's been a reporter, you have uh, top resolution 2346. Thank you, Steve.
You you bet. Is Steve cool there today, tonight?
No, he's not gonna be here.
Okay, well, I don't have much to add that um for my report. This is, these are all. To to a lawyer, accounting maneuvers, accounting adjustments that they use the term adjustment differently than I do, but I mean. Nothing, the council has already approved everything uh in terms of expenditures. It's just time to pay. You know, interest in uh and and in some cases, I think uh maybe even some uh principal on bonds and uh so this allocates. Uh, the funds for the for the record, so to speak, uh the way that the council has already budgeted is has done it in the past and that. That's what this resolution does. That's all it does.
Okay, so we have consideration of resolution 2346 before the council. Is there a motion? Motion by Bobby, is there a second? Also, second by Tim. Any uh discussion? Okay, Mike, roll call.
John?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Schroder. Scott? Swales. Motion carries five to zero.
Congratulations to your daughter Maggie on her graduation.
Thanks.
Have fun. Uh, anything else for Steve? Any questions for Steve? Okay, we'll go on to the city clerk report.
Um, one other thing besides what was written, and when you said renewal with the CD, it reminded me. Uh, Troy and I just got our quote from Relyon, which is our health insurance, which renews this month too. Which is an increase, but not unreasonable increase. So with council approval, we'll go ahead and go through the renewal process for that. So. I believe that just a simple motion can approve that.
Steve? Yes. Yes.
So uh. Would anyone like to make the simple motion to uh?
Renew our renew our health insurance with Relyon? Yep.
Motion by Steph, is there a second? Also. Second by uh Tim. All in favor, say aye. All right, anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, we'll go on to the treasure report. And.
I I have one slight adjustment. I didn't get the Century Link bill until today. I got it on the warrants list and the bill has increased by fifty seven cents.
Oh.
I did that. Also, the the city has a CD with Hills Bank. With um. I'm gonna pull it up here, but expires. On the sixteenth and four days, we have until the twenty sixth. To uh December to renew. Uh, it's twenty fourth currently sitting in the CD is twenty four thousand five hundred and six dollars and eighty six cents. Uh, I met with uh Jordan at Hills Bank today and the cop rate right now is a seven month CD at five point three five percent.
And Steve said our other choice for the council is you can wait until January and John can review. Other competitive rates. What do you suggest, Bobby?
I I would suggest you go on with it.
Okay, Bobby, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna say, I mean. And if you if you're thinking about the city's entire portfolio and this is just. You know. A sliver uh. And it requires the city council thing, I think I. That would've been my recommendation, but.
No, I'm just. Worst case is rate fill up and miss out on.
And it's just. Just several months, yes.
Yeah, that's a high rate for just seven months. Would you like to make the? Okay, motion by Bobby, is there a second? Second by Doug. Uh, any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries high zero. Uh, and then we have the list of warrants. Correct. For you with that addition. And uh, is there any objection to pay in the warrants? Hearing none, the warrants will be paid by unanimous consent. Thank you. Then we'll go on to the police chief. Who just came back from Key West.
Well, the first time in my nearly five years here, I have nothing to add to my written report unless there's any questions to come.
Hey.
Thank you. And uh. Steph, did you have anything? Okay. We'll go on to finance, Bobby, did you have anything? Okay, Bobby, I thought this would be a good time. Uh, as I'd like to thank you for your four years of service on city council. And I have a very nice homemade plaque. That says presented to Bob, you know, certificate of appreciation. Wow, she invented a box, God, three more years of dedicated service. Thank you, Bobby. And uh. We'll go on to. Uh. Streets and sidewalks, is that right? Where is that where we are? Okay, very good. Okay, Ryan. Okay, let's go with you because you're gonna talk about uh.
Actually, I'm gonna do it this way. I think I'm gonna shoot screen.
Okay, so hopefully everyone had a chance to review my written report um and. I included. Uh, probably some extra detail uh this month regarding the Melrose Complete Street project to try and explain sort of. What we've got going on and 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 why and um. We're gonna, I'm gonna run through um several things to try and help clarify and hopefully answer most questions I had at the time. And then if anybody has any questions as we go, I'll bring them up. Uh, so initially, I guess I'd start by saying, you know. Why? Um, or yeah, it's sort of like, why are we uh proposing professional services agreement? Um, because we don't typically do this, right? So and and sort of why we want to have this discussion is. The city doesn't normally uh enter into these agreements with the engineering firm, so um. This has been done before on previous federally projects, um both federally projects, I think since just I as a city engineer. Uh, that would be the Melrose Wide Sidewalk and the Sunset Wide Sidewalk sidewalk projects. Um. And so it's not atypical to do this. Um. The reason for the timing is originally we were. Uh, attempting to handle the the project work under the general city engineering uh invoicing. And uh then in the spring, when we started going through the exercise of the CIP and trying to. Uh, fast track some other local street projects, we get those things moving. Uh, the the work kind of bogged down for the Melrose uh project. And so a lot of effort was to uh kind of diverted into getting those other projects going and and off the ground that were listed. So it's it's become clear that we we need a uh dedicated project team to take this on uh and kind of separate it from our other city engineering duties that we've got. And make sure that we can still simultaneously administer other things while this one is being designed and we did it so. Um, that's the basis of, okay, here's why we're here and and what the purpose of this is. So. So we've identified a project manager, um. Blake Peterson, uh and and that's noted in the end of the report, but. And then a project team, a couple other folks that are identified to take on the design load for this project. So. Um, why that's important is that there's very specific timeline and uh scheduled dates that need to be met for. Federal funding projects through the DOT. So if you're gonna let the project or bid it in a certain month. You there's there's no excuses. You have to have certain things submitted on certain dates leading up to that, and it's usually months and months ahead. So. Um. We're so that schedule and everything is uh is provided in the in the. Services agreement. And so sort of reviewing this. We also think it's just it's advantageous for the city because it also sets a sets a price for that work and also identifies the exact scope. Uh, more detailed scope if you have that, it's gonna be. And and also what's not included. So it's just very clear if there's ever a change, maybe to a sculpting project. Uh, that that there's parameters identified for. This is what the city and the design team agreed to for for what we're doing for it. So. Um. Okay. So that's sort of the general gist. Is there any questions on that part yet? No? Okay, so I'll I'm gonna run through this just real. Hopefully briefly, um. The scope of services is broken down mostly into uh what I would call three different parts and and that's also identified underneath the the different fee line line items. So. Uh, the first tilt is is the design. It's design and bidding essentially. So that's everything that's. It's going to be required of the DOT process to prepare and um. Submit the the plan set and documentation that's required for the DOT bidding process to the DOT and also to the city for review and comment. So. Uh, there are several different submittal steps and those are listed here in the design phase. I I hope they're like, maybe got a chance to. Spin through this or review some of that. Um. So there's preliminary plans, there's a submittal for that, there's a final design submittal uh and and check plans submittal. Um, so. Three main submittals uh. To and to the DOT certainly uh based on their requirements and schedules. So. And then there's right away coordination and utility coordination. And and so these in the fever breakdown are an estimate of an hourly um fee. These are going to be billed as as those services are uh incurred essentially, so as in the. Um, so these are expected uh due to the right away acquisitions we have. Uh, the work to prepare the right away exhibits. And acquisition exhibits is included in the design phase fee. However, uh things such as meetings with onsite with property owners um to coordinate any questions regarding owns or exhibits needed. To provide clarity um to any property owners or utility companies under the utility coordination item uh would be billed out under these terms. Kind of lost any brains. Okay. Bidding phases included in the uh the flat fee under the bidding and sign phase. Construction based services is not included in this contract. Uh, part of the reason for that is that there's a kind of a long lead time for our design here and also to get the private utilities relocated. Uh, which has to be done before really before we did this thing now. So we need to make sure that we have those acquisitions. And utilities relocated. So due to that delay, uh we thought it would be better to not provide some estimate of a number of what the construction base service is gonna cost. Um, in order to not provide a rad number as in the for the city to be paying. So. That's that would be something that would be required when you're doing the DOT process because it does take a lot of extra paperwork. And completing this process and construction administration work. But it's not included in this in this contract. Uh, client responsibilities are listed here, so there's several items uh listed out there um. That that the city would be responsible for and these are. Fairly difficult, it's um, you know, legal services, the city needs to provide um a project representative, which would normally be someone like a uh city administrator. Um, so. Uh, I I don't know if, you know, who would be identified as that, say, the mayor um or streets and sidewalks chair possibly identify for that. Any contact? Uh, participation at review meetings, uh the cities will schedule and conduct informational meetings with the public as be necessary. Um, provide necessary right away easiness uh for the construction to 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 perform the project. And uh. Real estate and legal services and funding. Schedules listed here, so the first uh submittal to the DOT would be in February if this was approved in January. Um, and then that's a concept statement, submittal, and then uh the intent would be in May 2024, preliminary plans to be submitted to the city for review. So due to our uh long lead time with utility relocation, we want to get uh preliminary plans to the city early. And get things rolling as far as review and comment. So that then we have uh we can identify sort of a clear path forward at that point. Uh, prior to submitting to the DOT and also use that initial plan set to start engaging with private utilities as soon as possible. Uh, because relocation work can can be extensive amount of time to get completed. So. We want to start that process as soon as we we have a. Fairly good idea of what the preliminary plan is. Uh, check plans to the DOT in August and also uh or to the city and then we would submit preliminary plans submittal to the DOT. At that same time. And then uh. Kind of fast forward right away, and utility relocation would be twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And then uh in twenty twenty five, we would submit check plans to the DOT and then its final pass to the DOT. And then the bidding would be in either fall or winter, kind of depending on how if we're ahead of schedule, we may be. Uh, did the project earlier, but construction will be planned for twenty twenty six. Additional services section. Um, so there's a list here of things that are are not included uh in the fixed fee amount. So um, some of those are exploration of underground utilities um by by vacuuming them or actually exposing them, oping them. Uh, environmental investigations. So so there's. Uh, due to the already developed nature of the roadway and um. General the city, it's not anticipated that there's going to be a certain level of environmental permitting applied. So this is city, if if for some, there's in that supply environmental archaeological work, that's beyond what's expected. You know, those are who do this. Yeah, so yeah, it it's yeah, through the DNR. Um, well, the permitting system. System would be, but we would we would supply, uh we'd have to. Possibly hire out this uh a third party firm to perform those uh. Those permit uh reports, I think. Uh, as it stands now, we're not anticipating that. So uh, the DOT's process, we can perform those permits uh if it's. Already developed and they don't identify that there's going to be some sort of uh environmental impact. That's that's a concern. So. Right away, the easement acquisition services other than what's been described um in the previous sections. Scheduling, conducting public information meetings. Sanitors through water improvements, so that would be something we would coordinate with Iowa City. So Iowa City's um on all four Iowa City had requested that all water means. Replace, so that was coordinated with them and and paid for by City by our city. So. That's something that as we do forward, we'll we'll identify in coordination with Iowa City. Um, design of landscape and paintings, um, you know, beyond standard turf restoration. So. With that corridor, we're not anticipating a whole lot of plantings or trees um due to the narrow nature and and the fact that we're widening the curbs out and widening sidewalks out. Uh, design associated with city wayfinding and monument signs, design and coordination of decorative streetscape amenities. Such as benches, paddock, and receptacles and planters. Uh, just to clarify, this is really good. If if there were uh a desire for for trash cans or benches, um, we could certainly. Easily add paths to facilitate those items, so a concrete paths. And if there is a sort of a standard uh detail for what those are look like. Uh, that could be added to the plans there. It's more uh, this is more identifying that we're not going to. Coordinate meetings or um committing to sort of identify decorative uh features for those types of things in this. So. Um. Traffic studies uh for the corridor intersections within the private area, it's not included. Uh, we're planning to utilize information that that the MPOJC has collected over the last couple of years at the intersection of. Cozier and Melrose. Design driveway consolidation and parking areas in the southeast quadrant of Melrose Avenue and Cozier intersection. So there's been discussion previously about eliminating uh two driveways on Melrose, uh just to the east of the intersection. Um, and. That uh. There's not been, I don't think we have anything concrete yet with those property owners. So there's not been design work done in order to consolidate their driveways to come off bald and court. So there may be additional work needed. To not only access their properties and survey to identify, hey, how are we gonna lay off this survey driveway as a parking lots to access their uh. Derives from the rear instead of uh the Melrose. So. That scope, what isn't clear that we're doing that a hundred percent, so it's not included in this uh contract. Then the construction base services again, uh like I mentioned before, are not included. So that's construction observation during the during the project. Okay. Okay, so the speed, I think is the main remaining thing to discuss. So uh, so there's a project fee in there for design and bidding phases and then a right away coordination and utility coordination is separated out as. Hourly estimated fees. So the design and bidding phases, uh actually all of these added up, um. The project manager Blake Peterson. He identified this uh two different ways. One by referencing other projects uh of similar style um. That also included DOT process, which is it's it's more cumbersome um that in general through the design and construction phases, but. Um. And and put together a more detailed hourly breakdown of what what what's anticipated for. Certain aspects of the projects, um, you know, how how many people, what their billing rates are, uh a little bit more detailed than what our 2017 uh. Uh, concepts were for the funding requests and then. Also looked at updated pricing. Um, so it's it's no secret that the costs have gone up since since COVID and supply chain issues uh and those costs have not come down. So. Um. So what Blake also did is updated some of the line items that we reported used for the concept exhibit. And and also the the intersection signalization was not originally in the concept. Identified for a complete replacement. Um, at this point, we we know more about exactly how things are laying out and just looking at the survey, we know where those footings are uh for those traffic signals and. We are planning that those are gonna have to, it's gonna have to be a completely new system, uh all all full coordination, the signals would be replaced. So. Um, so that that was kind of a a large lump sum item uh to increase the. The current anticipated construction costs. So um. So anyway, the. After updating that, he also fact checks what his hourly estimates were for the for the work. Uh, by utilizing uh something we typically do, which is a kind of a percent of construction costs for the design fee. So this uh this, and I checked it again um today, so I and I both looked at at this again. Um, and back checked this uh number, even with the right away utility coordination and. The survey costs that this is already incurred um from last fiscal year. Uh, that percentage is on track with other projects that we've had before um. With uh the Melrose sidewalk project and Sunset sidewalk project are anywhere from twenty eight percent to thirty percent of the construction costs. Uh, true actual post-construction construction costs. And right now, this total. And sort of what our concept, uh updated concept um. Sort of construction engineering costs estimate is currently, uh that would be right about twenty six percent. So. So we're on, yeah. With the design and construction. They put it together. So. So currently, we are right probably right around twelve percent, um thirteen percent of design. Design fee compared to the anticipated, I guess estimated is a better word, construction, construction costs. For updated. Now, I want to be very clear and careful about using the term estimated construction cost because the. The the preliminary plans will include a better estimate of construction cost. So concept. Going from concept to the preliminary plan in May will will provide a whole lot better detail. The scope of that concept exhibit, you know, it's gonna be different than what's shown on that concept exhibit because there's. There's additional paving on on all here that needs to be done. That is not shown on that. And so that needs to be quantified and included. So. There's, I think there's several items kind of within that sort of. Vain, uh, but this still has changed a little bit since 2017 and those costs and quantities have probably changed and increased possibly. This is our best. The best we can do at the moment, I guess. They should probably estimate those costs. Once they get in and they we actually start to design and laying it out, then those numbers can become a new focus quite a bit more.
Talk about the the bidding process. Uh, if this is the current job slash state job, is there any requirements or preferences for. Uh, in-state contractors and architects and design? If you just go low. No, uh, and is it optional that if you have somebody here locally, if it's within a certain percentage, can we stay with somebody that's local?
Well, so there there would be a requirement for uh data spaming wages. So that they're do like a wage requirement, which is federally. Funding. So the wage rates are set uh by the by the project based on um local. Prevailing wages, yes, you should say so, I should say so. Uh, whether it's an outstate contractor or not, they have to pay a certain. Right, depending on the the way their class of that person is qualified for or the job that they're doing on this night. So. Um, whether they give, whether the DOT provides a reference plan state or not, um, I don't know. I don't know if that's the case. I think, you know, there's certain requirements. So I mean, there there are things like disadvantaged business um. Requirements uh for a certain person that needs to be met, but. Yeah, I guess. I don't think there would be a reference on whether it's other necessary.
But it's pretty speaking from experience, anytime we with the hospital, even when you ask somebody out of state, it's all hard to. Chase them back down here when they're from Minnesota and Wisconsin and they don't feel so obligated into coming back down to. Yeah, go on the project with somebody local, you can squeeze them pretty good to get them to move.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess I. I would, I guess I'd say in your experience, most bidders are. Yeah, and I mean, I guess I, I would, I guess I'd say, and with experience, most bidders are fairly local. Um I I don't even, I don't even know if I've ever seen somebody that's not from Iowa, been on a project in my local area, Corvo. I would say uh no today, so um. Um yeah, I mean, that's that's a good point, but.
Like you also didn't view in requirements or anything, you're throwing everything out.
No, mo- mostly it's just that that we we have to go through a process to verify. That that the contractor and subcontractors are paying their employees a certain amount and and. That not only increase their their uh everyday wager rate, and it also increases their. Like their benefits and everything, it all has to have, like the benefits can be included to add to a certain value. And so those things get checked, so I think that's the main, the main concern.
Then one other topic. Me, there's a bus stop up there on the corner of my cells or two, but how do we handle that, is that? Could we put something nicer there, is that I'm city's obligation or is our obligation for the. I don't know, the shelter or the bus stop landing, or are they gonna relocate that one or?
So are are you talking about the one that's in like the median?
Yeah, yeah.
Um if if there's a, uh I don't know, that's a good question, I guess it's, I think either city has installed. Other shelters, um is it, maybe I would ask, is does University Heights want a shelter? There, you know, that would probably be my question, um if it's not wanted, I I guess there's limited space there, so.
Right.
Um a shelter would probably be difficult to install there unless there's major adjustment to the to planting area, right? Uh in that island, so, or or maybe restructuring, reshaping that, that.
Shelter or something there, I I would.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there there could be, um looking at sort of realigning that intersection is something that they're gonna do. Um I I don't know, you know, just I I've sort of briefly started trying to look at look at that and started viewing it um. I don't know if there's a whole lot we can do without expanding the scope quite a bit to modify those alignments. Particularly on the south side of Cogery. It's difficult, but it's something that I've talked through, uh Blake is in our demoing office, but he visited onsite. And I walked around and and looked at several things, and that that's another, that's a discussion that we had. It was, can we re-align Cogery and Gulfview a little bit? Um I've also been talking with Paul Moore, and he has concerns about the width on. Particularly on the north side of the intersection, uh with Gulfview and semis and bus traffic. Um apparently they're tracking over the the curb line or swimming out wide, I guess. Um into the on that rings, on rings maybe, I just love your sense, so. Um I'm gonna plan to meet with him um after January one. So there's two. In order to widen that street, it won't be required to properly. He's worried that it sounds like they saw my conversation I had with them.
How long is the? I mean, it's a big contract, obviously, so what's the realistically, a lot of the investing now. Is what's the downside of waiting, putting the decision back in? Realistically, what's gonna happen, you know?
Uh yeah, so uh right now, we're not asking for any decisions tonight, I guess, just wanna make that clear too. Uh the schedule is uh updated. To reflect that there's no action on this contract until the January. So we we are not, and I don't think, I think Steve becoming that we cannot take any action on this, because we don't have an advantage to do that. So um so this is simply just a discussion about the contract to to answer any questions. And or allow you guys to have another month to to review and and ask any questions that you. So yeah, that's. Pushing it back beyond January, the impact would would simply be a a slight delay to to the rest of the schedule by December. Um whether that would impacts, you know, whether we could bid in December of twenty twenty five or not, I I would have to make one more.
Any other questions for Ryan? Oh, we can do it.
Wendy, oh, no, about assignment. After preliminary. I would say that probably a bigger section items. Uh as after they have identified, I sort of like, hey, this is what we think the best layout is, sort of like just a line of questions, right? And then and maybe what the impacts are to all those areas and whether. Well, making major adjustments to that uh player area and that again, which I think we discussed might be a location for this.
And to review a little bit, this was uh drawn up by Joe Siya initially in sixteen and seventeen. Some of you may remember, and uh then it was brought to the MBO with. The transportation, uh the T-TAC and the Urbanized Area Policy Board. And then it was approved and it was at, it was a one point four million dollar project. And we're gonna receive seven hundred and thirty thousand in federal money. And that was, I think it was a fifty fifty split, wasn't it? I I just can't remember exactly. We reviewed it seven times and so. You know, it's always like when we did the sidewalk projects, the Melrose and the Sunset, those were federally funded. And so we had to follow federal funding rules then, and so. There's just a lot of needs and things and rules of who you can accept for the bids, if you can, it's very specific. It takes a little bit longer and some time, but we do get a lot of money. And so we can, right, Ryan, we can, so this project what's drawn up is from twenty seventeen.
Right.
And so this council can decide, make some changes depending on, you know, what we're doing now. And cost and things like that, right?
Yeah, and I think that's gonna be an important part of the process, right, is um. I I mean, I think our preliminary goal cost, I mean, it's a lot higher, I don't scare anybody, but it's it's a lot higher. And I don't wanna necessarily tell them, but and so we have better feel for the the actual. It was pretty on that land possibility, but um. Yeah, that's, the cost is probably gonna be a a good conversation, I I do, it does sound like there's maybe some more. Um funding available, with funding available um as of late, so you know, maybe that's not going to be quite as big a concern, but. The scope and how much is done, the the project itself with the funding can't necessarily change. The main parameters, like we need to add bike lanes, right, we need to widen sidewalks, that is the main point of the that funding application. Yeah, so um and and we can't like just cut half the product off, it still has to go from. You know, pretty much from, hey, we said we'd go from this point to this point, so um so those are things that are important to remember, but. Yeah, like if if there's a decision, like, oh, well, maybe we don't wanna do this or that, or you could save. Some some money that way, but those are common decisions, certainly, that hopefully can happen. Yeah, and as far as the funding goes, I I didn't touch on it much, I guess I I meant to, but uh I think Louise had asked me a question about. Uh you know, can the funding be also used for the design costs um? And and the answer is yes, uh the city certainly could do that, there is a DOT process if you're going to do that as well, though, so. That would be a whole nother request for proposals to get uh basically bids from from design firms. And um the. That would take, that would be more time probably um to impact the schedule. Um to go through that process, and it would cost um some money, it would be effort um also through organizing review. And and issue that uh requests for proposals. And the funding amount is set, so you're not gonna get more funding. Because you you use the money for the design uh fee, so.
We didn't do that with either of the sidewalk projects, do you remember that, my, we didn't do it with even the Melrose or the Sunset? Because you have to open the bidding and we want to try pattern, you do it, and we could, you know what I mean, don't open it. And I think you made a good point to me, you have seven hundred thirty thousand, they're gonna give you, you use it however. You know, you want, except for this part, because that just slows it down. Cause you always have to jump through a lot of hoops when you receive federal funding, which is fine. And uh.
Yeah, I think essentially it's it's the project costs, even in. You know, even in twenty seventeen, the construction costs were estimated at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so I think. I think when we talked, it was sort of like, you have seven hundred thirty, the costs are higher today than they were in twenty seventeen, so.
Really a lot higher.
So it's it's not a matter of the cities can have access money that they that they want. Well, yes, so hopefully I covered everything, there's a lot between the uh agreements, and I I guess I don't wanna. Go point by point and everything, but.
Yeah.
Certainly let me know if there's anything that you see on there, they have a question on, send plans to their patient on.
Well, I'll go ahead and put it on the agenda for consideration in January, but council's not forced to decide then. Just push it back a little bit, but that's, that can still work.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Ryan, did you, you had, uh, did you wanna do anything else in your? Look, who's here? Well, you just missed the whole journey, Tate.
Yeah, so I don't, there in my report, uh I also mentioned, um I think the big item would be the automatic traffic enforcement system, so. Um working with Chief Calister on that, um the the company that the city's working with submitted some plans for that. And I've been having some discussions with him and and P O G C and um. Gotta do some further coordination with them and get some initial comments back to the town. That gen op company that's gonna be installing the the cameras for automatic speed enforcement, and then. Planned to probably set up a meeting. To get that coordinated, isn't that good then? Uh and then, yeah, Gulfview, I've been trying to channel this, we uh had a survey, it begins, um he has some survey for the these exhibits that we talked about last.
Very good. Any other questions for Ryan or Joe Siya? Welcome, Joe Siya, did you get done at North Liberty early?
We did, we, they started six thirty.
Oh, well, there you go. Thank you, and uh so we'll go down to E government and Lisa sent around a E government report. Are there any questions for Lisa?
I have a question.
Okay.
Did you leave that mean done?
It's done. What do you think? I mean, it was hard to get it after Thanksgiving, that's why they don't wanna do it, but it really cleans up the city well. Don't you think? It really does a good job, because they always say to me, no, can't go after Thanksgiving, but since the leaves were so late this year. They wanted to give us the best deal they could, and so they were very flexible, I know it was just weather related and very frustrating. But it does look really good, I think. And uh are there any announcements? Uh is there any objection to adjournment during that, the meeting's adjourned, I was gonna say, happy holidays, everyone.